Hey, it is 7:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting in order. Invocation by Pastor Bob Dirdoff, beautiful Savior Lutheran Church. Bob, if you'd be as kind.
Gracious God and Father, as we approach the day of our national Thanksgiving, we are cognizant of the fact that we have so much to thank you for. For a bountiful land with its natural resources, for its industrious citizenry, and for dedicated public servants, we give you thanks. We ask your continued blessing, because you are so good and kind, to grant us the skill and the ability to wisely use the resources that you've allocated to us. We ask your continued protection and blessing upon those who serve in the dangerous facets of our community, and fire, and rescue, and police services. We ask wisdom for those who will be making decisions tonight. We ask for peace and unity among your people. We thank you for our government at all levels through which you give us so much order, justice, and harmony. We ask all these blessings, not because we deserve them, but because you are good and loving. And so we thank you for these and many more things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Blessed are we to testify, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Did we do roll call? We better do that, huh? Roll call.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Harmon.
Here.
Steinbeck.
Here.
Austin.
Here. Okay, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act in Nebraska is posted on the wall with back to council chambers. Consent agenda, all matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may however remove any item from the consent by request. So we'll go ahead and go into that. Item number two, or excuse me, one is approved minutes of November 7th, 2017. Item number two, accept bids and award contract to FYR TEK of Gothenburg, Nebraska for one 2018, one ton, four-wheel-drive, type-one ambulance in the amount of $226,615, and authorize the mayor to sign all contracts. Item number three, I've been asked to pull this from the agenda. They will bring this back an additional date, probably the next council meeting. So we'll pull item number three.
Move that we approve items one and two of the consent agenda.
That motion passes? All right, thank you. All right, on the regular agenda.
I am free to be pulled.
What happened on that Wes, that Wes Meyer had a scrivener's there, there was a typo in the information that we had sent out, so we'll correct that and put it back on next time.
It'd be helpful to me, because I know what the value of that is.
I can get it to you.
Or ballpark.
Sure, sure.
Okay, regular agenda, item number four. Approved recommendation by the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee for an application providing $350,000 funding match for a shot-in-the-arm Phase II housing development.
Move that we adopt the recommendation by the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee for an application for providing a $350,000 funding match for a shot-in-the-arm Phase II housing development.
Back up.
I think we need to have Mr. Pearson come up and talk.
Gary, did you want to, where are you? Did you want to talk, Gary, or do you have someone else who would?
I'm prepared to, if you'd like to hear a little bit more about it.
Sure, if you'd be so kind.
First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and thank you for all that you do for the community. Appreciate your public service. As the agenda item says, we're here tonight to present a Phase II of the very successful Shot-in-the-Arm program that was just completed. The Phase I, that was a partnership between the city and the North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation. One that was very successfully done. It accomplished what its primary purposes were, and has gained statewide attention for North Platte as being very creative and innovative when it comes to addressing this workforce housing issue, which seems to be plaguing everywhere in the state of Nebraska right now. Just to, I was prepared to give a PowerPoint presentation. I, my apologies, didn't realize that we needed to bring the computer for the flash drive to sit in. So we did hand out what the presentation was going to be. I'll just hit some of the highlights. But Phase I is just now wrapping up. The last homes are being completed, or 48 new homes that were constructed, all within the city limits. Ninety-two percent of the single-family homes have already been sold. It's added $10.8 million, new valuation, a community generated between $125,000 and $150,000 in new sales tax through the construction portion of that. $240,000 in new property tax will be generated annually. That's if the homes appraised at what they sold for, or not, I mean valued at what they sold for. We estimate that this will bring eventually 125 to 150 new residents into the community who will spend their money in the local economy. I know one of the questions was, well, is this actually helping lower-priced housing for some of the residents we're recruiting as well? A good portion of these homes were purchased by current residents here who were upgrading their personal situation, therefore opening homes that are in a lower price range for other folks that are coming into the community and looking for jobs. And I'll break that down in another PowerPoint. The original investment by the city and the Chamber Development Corporation, $172,000 each. So you see even on a return on investment, and just some of the new sales tax, the new economy that's adding to the workforce here, as well as the new property taxes are generating in the community. Some of the reasons we originally launched this program was that our housing study showed there was a deficiency in all the price points of the various housing in the community. The 2008 recession really damaged the capacity which we were able to deliver housing development in the community. Our MLS listings were below the national average, and we lagged significantly behind a lot of our peer communities. And those being the six communities that were kind of a similar-sized population in Nebraska and watching what they're doing. Those are the communities we usually compete with for economic development projects, and our development efforts were significantly behind that. And we'd seen housing development continue to decline in recent years. The next chart, we compared the 10 years prior to the time that this program was launched, 2004 to 14. And you can see the number of housing units on that chart on page two. There were Carney, Columbus, Norfolk, Hastings, Fremont. The number of housing units they constructed during that 10-year period of time, and then what North Platte constructed. And then what the population change was as a result of that 10-year window of building new housing units. So there's a direct correlation, what we're trying to say, between housing development and your population growth and your ability to meet your workforce demands in the community. Kind of the national average, what is recommended is that you replace or rehabilitate 1% of your housing stock in the community each year. We have 11,624 housing units in North Platte. That's according to the latest statistical information out there from the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority. And so using that barometer, we would need to actually build or replace or rehabilitate 116 units a year to keep, to maintain our economic stability and the growth, which is our goal as a community. We weren't building because commercial work was drawing mostly available contractors. Custom remodel jobs were low-risk, with limited labor. Skilled tradesmen weren't joining the ranks. We've seen a real de-emphasis of vocational trades over the past 25 years in the educational system. I'm not just talking North Platte, I'm talking about nationwide. And that really, we paid, we're paying a dear price for that now. And we had no volume builder in North Platte. Most of the builders who had survived were the people who were doing one or two homes custom-built a year, and others had gravitated towards that commercial work because of the risk factor. Breaking down the age of the North Platte housing, next chart on page three shows you how many houses in our current inventory were built prior to 1939 and then every decade since. And as you can see, since 1970, we've continued to see that decline over the years from housing in, bottom line is 75% of our housing stock that exists today in North Platte is over a half-century old. Houses this decade, just what's been built since 2010 in North Platte, and when we're talking single-family homes. And you can see those numbers range 20, 26, 13, 19, 19. And then you see the next two years, 15 and 16, highlighted in red there on page four, where you can see the impetus of what the Shot-in-the-Arm did. It really got those numbers up. And then you look at where this year is, when the program basically ended. Everybody had had their houses permitted, and we've only had nine single-family houses permitted. In addition to, in addition to that, there's three tiny homes, which are kind of hard to count when it comes to considering their single-family residences. The 2010 housing study indicated there would be a need for 850 housing units, including 460, 460 single-family houses needed by 2015, between 2010 and 2015, if we were to maintain an economic growth and hit our target demand. And during that timeframe, from 2011 to 14, only 77 were built prior to the Shot-in-the-Arm. Bottom line is, we can't grow the community if we don't house prospective employees and current demand that our employers have for trying to fill the jobs that they have. Our employers expect action. That's who we represent in the community, the Chamber Development Corporation, our business members. And we identified in the end of August, we had about 500 primary jobs currently open in the community, and 300 of those were just associated with our largest three employers in the community. Those are jobs that already exist, that are already here. The vast majority pay decent, good benefits, and they're good wages. And that's not even counting the secondary labor market that you see all around town, help wanted signs. Rental markets were tight. Motels were seeing a larger number of people seeking temporary housing there. Most developers over the 1980s and 90s gravitated towards low- and moderate-income housing because that's where all the incentives were. There was really nothing out there for, to target that market-rate, breadwinner-type person who we were trying to seek into the community for our workforce. And we've had some meetings because of all this, the open jobs, the concern over being able to recruit workers here, and the lack of housing with our three largest employers. We gathered some community leadership. We sat down with them, we had very frank discussions on what we needed to do. We set some short-term goals, some long-term goals. And always in those conversations, it became very apparent that housing was part of, part of what was a hindrance to us to be able to do all that. The homes for sale in North Platte, on average, and Nancy's here from the real estate company, is Lawrence, of course, but they're saying kind of the average recommendation for an average market in a community this size, you should have about 150 houses for sale to have a healthy market and for people to have choices coming into the community. And as you can see by those numbers, they've dipped considerably down below 100 in the last few years. We've already kind of covered what the results of the Shot-in-the-Arm, number one, did. And then I broke down what each one of the six developers have done that participated in the program. As you can see, most of them have already sold all of their single-family units. And then we also said how many of them were sold to local folks. That's the question you had asked Brooke about. And then how many new families were actually coming to North Platte as a result of these 48 new housing units that were built. The next page shows you, and let's just talk about this year, 2017 calendar year, and just the months that have unfolded since then. How many single and duplexes were permitted from January through October by those six communities? And you can see Columbus at 75, Fremont 69, Carney 67, Hastings and Norfolk 44 each. And we've had 12 in North Platte. And those are our peer communities. Those are the people we try to keep pace with, those are the people we try to compete with. And we need to send a strong message to our existing business community and the jobs that are currently open, that we are being very proactive. We're trying our best to address this. We have a very successful program in Shot-in-the-Arm, and we know it works. And we tweaked it a little bit to make it even better. And we have the interest of five of the six developers that already participated in Phase I, as well as some outside developers that are looking at North Platte now as perhaps an attractive place for them to go and build housing. They recognize that the need is there, and I guarantee you, nobody's going to build a house on a speculative basis if they don't think they can sell it. So we're going to, we're going to support whatever they feel is the sweet spot for them, the niche to fill. Included some of the photos of those Phase I homes that were included. Those are just a small sampling of them. You can see they were nice homes, well-fitted, to really provide a very attractive complement to the community when new residents are looking to come to town. The qualifying incentives for the Phase II program that we're presenting to you tonight, that the single-family and the duplex townhomes must be 1,400 square feet minimum with a two-car garage. We found that that was the standard minimum that everybody was looking for when they were, they were looking. We had some townhomes built out the golf course that were a little smaller than that. And those people who have shown the homes will tell you that they've shown them a lot, but the common question, or the comment they get back is, they're just a little bit too small for us to consider. So we've tweaked that and made that to where they have to have a larger standard to them. As a result, we're going to up the incentive, the proposal is to do that for both sides of the townhome. So a developer could qualify for the same as a single-family home because you're really recruiting two new families into those situations. We're also going to offer to multi-unit family developers, they could qualify for up to $4,000 incentive per unit, up to 16. So somebody can't come in and build a 128-unit complex and take all the money. This is to keep that at a level that's still an attraction for a developer, but yet make sure that we're spreading that situation around where we can, and there's no mandate where the homes go. So you know, this is going to be spread out throughout the community, just like Shot-in-the-Arm was. It depends on the developer who's taking the risk. There will be a penalty clause. A developer has to commit to building at least four. They have to build at least one in 2018, and they'll, it's a three-year rollout. And then they would have until the end of the period, just like in Phase I, to complete all four of the homes. What we didn't want to do is lower that number because we don't want somebody saying, well, I'm going to build my dream home, and I'm just going to tap this for an $8,000 incentive, because that's not the purpose of it. It's, the purpose is to have speculative housing to where we can attract additional workforce and grow our workforce. Our three largest employers have all endorsed the program and are supporting it. And like I said, in September, all of, they identified 300 open positions. We have Mark here from Walmart Distribution Center. There's several Great Plains Health officials here tonight, Mel McNay, the CEO. And we've had numerous conversations, very encouraging conversations with the Union Pacific Railroad. As you're, as well documented, the community, they're trying to fill 150 jobs right now. In North Platte, we put together, built around that meeting where we had, where we got everybody together and had that brainstorming session on what we could do. We had a big hiring event. We had this kind of this disconnect going on. And there was a study done by the state that kind of showed you do have job seekers in our region, like an 18-county region, that would like to have a better job. And you have employers who were desperately needing workers, but there was not that connectivity, that somehow we were facilitating that communication to go on. That's what our hiring event did. We did it more in a kind of a fun atmosphere down at Wild Bills Bowling and Friday night football game that the Huskers were playing on, back when we used to play football. And the, and the response was overwhelming. And people liked the lighthearted atmosphere. The employers were absolutely thrilled with what we were able to do. Megan did a lot of the social marketing, as did the larger employers. And we had over 300 people show up. And better than half of those came from outside of our county, looking for jobs in North Platte. So I think everybody was very pleased from that. Opened our eyes to some things that we can do additionally to that. The Quality Growth Fund Committee has unanimously recommended this for approval, as has our Economic Development Committee and our Board of Directors. So I mentioned, five of the six Phase I developers have already shown an interest in Phase II. And additional housing developers have expressed a strong interest in North Platte. What, the beauty of this is, the timing of it is critical, that the commitment is in place now because at the last legislative session, they adopted legislative bill 518 for a one-time-only workforce housing initiative. They have set aside $7 million for communities to go compete for, to get state funds to bring that back to your community. But some of the requirements are, you have to have a minimum of a dollar-to-dollar match. It has to be already committed, and it has to be technically in the bank, so you could prove that the money's there as part of your application. Those rules are going to be announced in December. And we expect the applications to go in shortly thereafter. We want to hit the ground running, we want to have the program in place. We already have a proven avenue that we know that this program works. And we think it's our obligation to help bring some of those state funds back to this community. That's going to help us really have a significant impact with this, this project and this program. Because then the pot grows to 1.2 million, not just 700,000. If all that would come to be, and I'm not saying we're guaranteed $500,000, I'm just saying we're going to have a very competitive application that's going to stand up to a lot of scrutiny, that we have a good chance of bringing several of those dollars here. That if all that came to be, the developers find that the demand is here, they continue to build in that three-year program, we could build up to 150 more housing units. I think that would go a long ways towards us sending not only the right message to our current employers, but those companies we're working with that are looking at North Platte and they're thinking, who would I hire, and where would they live? And it gives us kind of a leg up, because they'll look at North Platte as being, just like the Shot-in-the-Arm one did. It sent a strong message across the state that, boy, that community's innovative, they're creative, and they're really working hard to get things done. Other things that we're going to parlay this to is we're going to continue to work on tomorrow's future workforce through career academies. The North Platte Public Schools and the Community College are working collectively together to try to help plant the seed for young folks in the school system to understand that vocational trades is a good thing to get into. You're going to get into it for far less debt than you would in an academic four-year institution, and it's, it's a good living. And we have the ability to keep those folks here with a skilled trade and really help them, help themselves by having a good, decent living to look forward to. And we want to apply some legislative pressure so that we can put more emphasis on the funding of educational institutions that offer vocational programs. So we've seen that de-emphasized over the last quarter century, and I think it's because of the high cost of the programs. And so finding instructors is tough and everything else. But I, those are the kinds of things we want to, want to work on. And the last thing I'll mention is that the 2020 census is right around the corner. 2000, the process is already underway, as Judy will tell you. And they're going to start counting noses in 2019 around town. And then they'll recheck those figures, and they'll update them in 2020. But that's a figure we're going to live with for a decade. And we're going to be looked upon by businesses, industry, people wanting to move here, if we're a community that's growing or a community on the decline. It's that simple. And you have to live with that for 10 years. And we want to do everything we can prior to then to grow our community. And the only way that we can do that is through additional housing. I'm absolutely, totally convinced of that. Spent 35 years in the economic development world, and I can't express to you enough how important housing and workforce recruitment and skills are to help grow economies and attract new business and keep the ones that we have. So that's, in a nutshell, presentation. I'll probably give you a little more than you wanted, maybe the whole enchilada. But there's a lot of other folks here. If you have questions to validate the need, they can certainly do that.
Okay, I have some questions I jotted down while you were talking. So I'm looking at some of the numbers here. Let's say you add 150 units using this, you get the one, your full 1.2 million that you want, let's say, comes up with 150 units-ish that you were talking about. If you add, I don't know, how many people usually move into a family? Let's say everybody moves in, you know, you're talking 625 people. You know, that doesn't seem like it's made a huge difference on the census to me, I guess.
Well, we're hoping that this doesn't always just equate to the only houses being built, or the multi-units being built. You do those things, you give contractors the confidence to do more because they're seeing the demand grow. Say we're successful in getting a volume builder here, which we haven't had for several years. And they put 25 units in the first year, and they can do it in a more economical way because they will able, they can keep subs on the, on the ground, working, and systematically do that by products and volumes, and they can get the cost lower. If those 25 sell, I guarantee you, they'll go build another 25.
Yes.
And another 25. And, and they absolutely will, it's supply and demand. And I, I think it goes a long ways towards it. Can you imagine what happens if we continue to build 90? You know, you don't have a fighting chance to make that census work by the end of 2020.
So let me ask this then, how did you come up with the magic formula that you want 150 units? I mean...
By the incentive, the $8,000 per housing.
Do you think that's enough? I mean, because we did a shot-in-the-Arm, you know, a couple of years ago, and they're like, oh yeah, this will help really prime everything and get it ready to go. And then, oops, now we're stuck in alert. We have not the housing stock. You know, you're saying it's down to 88 or 90 or whatever, it fluctuates too daily. And our population's still declining, so it doesn't make sense to me that we have less houses available on the market, and we have a declining population unless everybody's just not marketing them with Realtors because they don't want to pay those fees, so they're doing FSBOs or whatever.
I, I think the vacancy rate has stayed pretty consistent from decade to decade. If you look back at past housing studies and some of the statistics that NIFA has. It's also, you know, tied to rehabilitating existing housing stock and doing the other things that you need to do to grow the community.
So are people really actually, maybe Nancy knows, maybe Lawrence knows, whatever, you know, are people actively really redoing these older houses that we have currently? Or are they, or do we just have more and more dilapidated houses here in town? Because before I knew it, oh, we have a bunch of dilapidated houses. So is it, that that trend is changing, or what's going on?
Well, you got...
I mean, have we done a study to know where our housing stock's at?
Nancy, here, you got organizations like the Lincoln County Community Development Corporation, who, you know, that's one of their missions, is to do those kind of things. There's rehabilitation grants that we can also go after to help contractors. And I think a lot of the landlords in town, they look for some of those bargain deals to buy and upgrade them somewhat, and supply that demand as well.
I mean, have you guys done anything to know kind of where we're at on that front? I mean, do you know, are we really getting rid of our crappy houses that are, you know, existed? And we're just flipping them, and that's why we're staying flat, or what?
You list property under about $35,000 to $40,000, and I think Nancy will verify this, you're going to have three and four bidders on every one of them for rehabbers or for a landlord wanting to buy for more rents.
Okay.
And when they do that, like when Gary says, and they build one, what was it, what was it, like 80% did you say? That when they sold them, 80% of the buyers were people who already lived here?
No, it's, it's not that high. It's probably around 40%.
Forty?
But...
Okay, but still, we're creating, we're creating a lower end, which is what a lot of these people need to get in their own...
That's double-edged sword, though, if you're selling to landlords, because you don't want people that are buying... That's double edged sword though, if you're selling to landlords, because you don't want people that are buying $30,000 houses and renting them back out for $500. And really, you know, the house is substandard. So you don't want necessarily that end of it either.
Right. But that, that's why all those low and moderate income, tax credit projects, those kinds of things exist.
Is that actually happening though? That's what I'm, that's what I'm curious. Do we know that that's actually, are people really remodeling?
Yes.
Yep.
Sure. Building permits probably tell that, doesn't it?
You can stay up here, that's fine. Um, I think we can answer your questions. We can't answer it today, but we're doing a housing study. You're supposed to do those every, you know, periodically. We've got this housing study going. We've already requested proposals from consultants to come in. We're supposed to have those on Monday, I believe is when the deadline is. And we're going to get that initiated. So that's going to answer probably 95% of the questions that you have. We're just not quite there. Give us a couple of months and we'll have that. He was talking about some rehabilitation things that are going on. Nancy Streebles, sorry. Nancy Streebles Organization, Lincoln County CDC has some grant funds and, and they're already starting to work on some of these rehab homes. Owner occupied rehab. The city of North Platte, if you remember a few months back, it's probably been about six months now. Applied for some funds for owner occupied rehab also to do an additional 12, I believe. Was it 12? Okay, to do an additional 12 owner occupied rehab too. So I think you're going to get those questions answered. I don't think that he can answer them today, but I do think you're going to get them answered.
So are these houses going to be higher end standards? Cause I remember last time, you know, Brooke brought up a lot. $350,000 houses, not everybody can afford those. Is that what we're building again?
Well, the, probably the average price we figured is around 220,000. The average price on Phase One is around 220,000, but there were some that sold for as, as minimal as 175,000. There was a, a handful over 300,000, but not many. But it, it's largely what the developer thinks is going to sell. We don't want to limit the developer and we need all housing from A to Z.
So let me ask this backup part of it. Cause Nancy was talking about, we were hoping for a trickle up effect. Did that actually happen last time? Okay. So people were buying up from an $80,000 house into a $170,000 house?
Yes. And, and I think in answer to some of your questions, right now, for example, we have 88 houses on the market. Under 150, I pulled these stats today. Still, there's 88 houses on the market, hasn't changed. Under 150. I have 36 houses under 150 total. Now, under 100, there's 22. That's where you get what you're talking about earlier. I would say half of those houses, maybe 10 of those houses would qualify for FHA financing or VA. And that's where we run into the problem is we have a good number of first time home buyers out there right now. And we can't, we don't have anything to sell them because a lot of those houses that are under 100,000 or even under 150. Will not qualify for FHA or VA financing. And, and so those houses, we've been trying to get investors to buy who will come in and flip them. They'll come in and I do the majority of the foreclosures in town. I do the FHA ones, I do the HUD ones, I do some of the others. And I would tell you that most of those foreclosures, probably 95% of them will not go FHA or VA because I've got broken pipes. You know, especially from now until June because they don't get winterized. So what will happen is those turn around and are sold to either investors who are going to keep it as a rental. Or they're going to be sold to investors who are going to go in and fix them up and resell them. And we had a good number of those, which has helped get some of those bad houses off the market. Because some of those houses, when you drive around town, especially when you get into this time of year, you're going to see. They start going downhill because they didn't get winterized and, you know, whatever else. So some of those houses you will see as you drive around town are foreclosures. And they'll be coming back.
Thanks.
And they sell. I mean, those houses, I mean, I get a house, if I, if I have a foreclosure that's under 75,000, I'll have five or six offers.
Yes, indeed.
And I mean, and, and that's a good, that's a good example to tell you that there's not enough houses out there. Because those investors are wanting to buy them to go in and fix them up and make a profit. Not a bad idea. And there's not enough of them out there to do that with.
Thanks. That's it. That's all I had.
I got a question for each one, one for each. First one for you is talking about these like cheaper houses that investors go in and buy. How many of those are realtors that are going in to buy in a real estate agencies that are going in and buying them and then turning them into leases after they slapped some paint on them and some windows and?
Okay, I will tell you that all of my HUD houses and all of my VA houses, a Realtor cannot buy it.
I know that. I'm talking about other houses that you said there was 22 that were under 100,000 right now.
You know, you're going to see some realtors. Honestly, there aren't very many of us realtors that go in and buy those.
I'm saying, I've seen a lot of that in the past five, 10 years around here in North Platte. Realtors, real estate agents going in and buying cheaper houses. And then like I said, slapping some paint on them, put some windows in them. And all of a sudden that $100,000 house is now a $180,000 house. And I mean, that takes that first time home buyer out of it again. So, and then some of that's my main concern was like him and I spoke last week about the cheaper housing in North Platte. Because we don't have a lot of guys that can afford, you know, a lot of people that live here can't afford that 250, 300,000 dollar house as a first time home buyer. And like you said, a lot of the homes we have that they can't afford don't qualify.
And, and a lot of, you know, I, I do work because I do so many foreclosures. I end up working with a lot of first time home buyers that are in that lower price range. You know, when I say lower, like 150 or less, because you can, you know, with the interest rates where they're at right now. If you buy a $150,000 house, your payment's going to run you maybe.
About 1,300.
No.
Full escrow?
No.
With our taxes?
It's going to be about a $150,000 house with a new, maybe a thousand dollars a month.
Then my bank lied to me.
Principal and interest on 150 is 750. So then add your escrows in and you're looking at about a thousand.
Okay. So I'm just saying my bank must have lied to me because I looked at one that was 140 and it was going to cost me 1,300 a month with our taxes we have here on that property. So, and insurance and all that, so.
Yeah, I don't know your particular situation. I don't know. I don't know, but you know, those are first, you know, that 150 or less are, are first time home buyers. And there's a lot of those out there and we just don't have very many houses that are going to qualify for FHA or VA right now. And so it is a struggle. So when you build that $200,000 house, that buyer who's 100 and, 125,000 dollar buyer. Can, has the opportunity to move up because we do have a lot. We have a good share of those people who want to move up to a bigger house or, you know, a little nicer house. And so that's, that has happened in this last program where we've started having people move up to that little bit more expensive house. And then that brings their house on the market for that first time home buyer.
Okay. Question I had for you, if you want to come up there. Of these 300 jobs you're saying we need, how many of them percentage wise is a 50,000 a year job? Or even a 40,000 dollar a year job?
I'd say vast majority.
Like 75%? 80? Roughly?
I, yeah.
Okay. And that's what I'm just trying to figure out to make these houses viable.
You know what the, the railroad's offering, you know, for 150 jobs out there, most of those are, are near there or exceeded. And.
You know, I'm going to have to start asking you folks to give your name and address if, if you're, if you please, be so kind.
Mel McDay, 3402 West F Street, North Platte, Nebraska. The jobs that we have available actually right now, over 40 of them are over 57,000 a year. They're frontline nurses that we can't recruit right now. 27% of nurses are going to retire next year nationwide. We have 30 international nurses that we are bringing into our community because we can't keep up with the demand. They need homes. They can't find them. They don't have a selection. Cause they can go anywhere in this country. So as an employer, I'm competing with Carney, Omaha, to recruit those individuals. And our, our wages are probably about $10,000 higher on this part of the state than the eastern side. The other thing is when we met with the three major companies, these are jobs we're going to lose in our community. Great Plains Health is a little bit different. We don't have a ability to relocate, go to another community. But you're going to see the other two major employers move those jobs to other communities where they can find homes. And that's what came up from you Pete, and that's what was even requested or evaluated out at our Walmart DC.
Okay. Well, out of those 44 nursing jobs, you said that's 57,000 starting.
That's 57,000 starting and we do tuition, yes, and tuition reimbursement. And that's not jobs like physical therapy, occupational therapy. Overall, I think we have, how many openings Shane? About 88 positions open at our institution.
Okay. And so over half of them are over that 50,000.
Probably even more than that because I'm just counting nurses. There's physical therapy, occupational therapy, radiologic technologists. Ultrasound technologists, like go down the list. We're growing, we're growing business and we need those individuals to keep growing in our community and region.
Check, because I mean, last time we had this discussion, it was people that worked in cafeterias and, you know.
No, and, and I'm sorry if that was conveyed by us. It's, it's high-end jobs. And quite frankly, as we see this going on in our region, Great Plains Health is going to be relied on to provide healthcare for this whole region. I need those people if we're going to deliver care to each and one of you, if you ever have that need.
I understand. I'm not saying you don't.
Yeah.
I was just trying to figure out the $300,000 houses because like I've said for seven years, we need.
We've actually lost employees that we've gone to a lot of expense recruiting, bringing them here. And they've had to live in, sometimes in apartments and basements and they've just left because they can't find anything permanently.
Thank you, Mel.
There seems to be a, a lot of comments made about the bill of 300.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is.
You might want to get closer to it. There you go.
There seems to be a lot of comments about $350,000 homes. If, if, and Mel will tell you this, the class of clientele that he's going to have there will buy the $350,000 home. Nancy will tell you this as well as I can. We go out here to show properties and they, they're doctors and they say, oh, show me all your properties. Well, you got three of them and two of them, you know, I wouldn't even buy them myself because even if I could afford it. And you tell them this is it. And they give you a real strange look. Sometimes they buy, they have a contractor build one, but most of the time Mel will tell you, they turn right around, drive off, don't they?
This is a perfect example of what you guys were asking. This is my daughter and she's 24, right? And her husband's 25. So she can tell you her story because they just moved here.
We just moved here cross-country.
Before that, would you be so kind as let us know what your name and address is?
Yes, Alexandria Stroud, 703 West Third Street. And we just moved in 703 West Third Street. We came back to visit family and were offered a job at the hospital for my husband. And actually just moved into a 1915 rehabbed home that was approved for a VA loan. So we pretty much checked all those boxes on what you guys were saying, is that possible? It is possible. People are rehabbing homes. We looked at a couple of different ones that would qualify for VA loans and did qualify. Our house was 155,000. So it was right in that median range and it was about a thousand dollars a month with the VA loan. But what draws, what drew us here was that he was offered an interview at the hospital right away. Well-paid salary comparable to what he was making in Virginia. And it was easy for us to find a house that was on the market that worked for us. So I just wanted to add that they are out there and they are popping up. And it is something that is possible and was easy for us to do.
Thank you, Sally. We're glad you're back in North Platte.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, we, we're glad to have you. Oh, I'm sorry. You have a question? Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of comments. When you look on the page four that talks about the number of housing permits. There are housing, single housing units built from 2010 to 2017. I want to point out that in those housing permits, three of those houses each year were built by Habitat for Humanity. And Habitat for Humanity's guidelines and shot in the arm guidelines does not permit Habitat to be involved in this program. And that somewhat offends me. You want low-income housing and here you have an organization that never stopped when times got tough. They kept building houses and yet we're going to shut them out. We're not going to help fund them, help them fund to build houses. The, the other comment I'd like to make is over on page seven, you talk about the single permits and stuff that were given from those houses. It's no wonder there weren't any housing permits put out in 2017 because they were all put out in 2016. Most of the building that was done in 2016 through the shot in the arm, or 2017 in the shot in the arm program. Were permitted in 2016. So that makes a little change to that number there. The other comment I'd like to make, and, and I, I don't want to take too much time doing this. I'm almost getting sick and tired of hearing that the only reason that the railroad and the hospital and the distribution center can't hire people. Is because of housing. I can, I can give you examples. I can sit here half the night and talk about them. Of examples of why some people aren't going to work for some of those organizations. And you, Gary and I talked about this this afternoon, that there was a little effort to get together and talk about some of these things. So that one dog wasn't fighting the other dog and to help each other out a little bit. One example I'll give you, there was a young man came out from Council Bluffs, happened to move into a rental house that I own. Went through the conductor school at the railroad. And the day before he reached that point that he, tenure isn't a word, some railroader give me the name of the thing that he qualified for severance pay and, and healthcare and that stuff. The day before he qualified, he was handed his furlough notice. And he went back to Council Bluffs. It's my understanding he's come, been called back by the railroad and now he's come back here. You cannot treat your employees that way and expect them to be really happy. Another example is a, is a lady, man and a, man and a lady, they have six kids. One of them's got a severe health problem. She's working two jobs. Well, one full-time job, one part-time job. He went through the hiring fair at the, that the railroad had. And could have got hired on at the railroad, but he's afraid to take the job for fear that he'll get furloughed before he hits that point to get some help. And, and so there, there they sit. He's got a job that he isn't making near as much money as he'd be making at the railroad. He could take better care of his family, but he's afraid to take that job. And it's those kinds of things. That internal things that need to be worked on. And I could talk about a couple at the hospital, but I'm going to shut up and quit. I haven't, I'll be real honest with you right now. I haven't even decided yet how I'm going to vote in the next couple of minutes.
Is there any other questions? Yes, sir.
Gary. We have this tremendous need. And developers aren't willing to do it with that need out there on their own without government subsidy. Why?
Because of the high price of infrastructure and construction costs, the lack of labor. People into the industry, it just, it costs much more to build today. And to bring that price to where it meets the demand for people's wages. And so it's, it's a real challenge. I mean, it's just, it's not a North Platte thing. This is a, it's a, it's across the country. But it's especially prevalent, I think in the Midwest. And there's not a, a community in Nebraska that I can, you know, that you go to a conference or a forum or a workshop. They're all screaming about workforce housing and what are the answers? And every community is trying to do something a little bit different, a little more creative to, to help it happen. But they all realize that unless they find some solutions out there, it just doesn't happen on its own. Everybody wished it did.
Page two, you list Carney as 2,000 units. Columbus is 700 units, Norfolk 700, Hastings 600, and we're down at 400. Is Carney subsidizing there?
I think they, they, I can't, I haven't fully investigated it, but I, I know every one of those communities are pretty, a little more aggressive at using tax increment financing for the infrastructure. Than this community has been. And that alone would spur a lot of development because. And that alone would, uh, spur a lot of development, because, uh, infrastructure costs probably cover twenty to twenty-five percent of your total housing cost, depends, you know, what the price of the house is. But those are the things that drive the cost up when they have to pay for all of those things on their own. And, uh, those communities have kind of embraced that, uh, to some degree. And it's helped, um, developers, um, be a little more encouraged about taking the risk. I, that's just one of the things. Uh, but, uh, a lot of it is they have to recognize the demand. And I think the fact that, you know, we've seen, uh, the number of housing developers here decline over the years. And, um, they're gonna go to where they perceive the demand is, where, uh, where they, they see other construction going on. And, you know, it's a wide gamut, there's no one magic answer out there. It's A to Z, everything factors into that. Yes, Jim?
Could be that the decline in, uh, per- perhaps decline in, uh, contractors is because not everyone is in, is inclined to ask for tax dollars as a precondition of building a, a spec house. How many, how many contractors might there be out there? And I don't think that's a number that we can capture, but that would be active. But they feel like that they can't, they can't, uh, compete with the infusion of government dollars to a select few that end up with the, with the, with the money. I tend to think personally that if we'd stay out of people's business and not create a hostile business environment, environment for those contractors that don't dip in here, we'd be better off. That's just a comment.
Okay, uh, just, I just wanna make one comment when everybody thinks, well, incentives are a new thing to try to make things happen in a community. Uh, if you look at Nebraska, uh, the majority of Nebraskans and most, many of our families came here as a result of the Homestead Act, the Kincaid Act, the Transcontinental Railroad Act, all of that was incentives, land-driven, to get people to move to their communities. And that's really the legacy of what built America, you know? You have to have sometimes the impetus of providing, uh, a partnership with people to, uh, embrace what's going on in your communities. And you always look at the return on investment. But I look at every additional family we could get here, it's gonna spend more money, it's gonna make our economy stronger, it's gonna help build our workforce. And it's gonna send the right message to our employers, so they're not thinking about moving those jobs down North Platte. They're, they're figuring out ways that they could continue to grow here and expand. And that's what I feel our responsibility is, the Chamber Development Corporation, as the voice of the business community, is that we're trying to recognize what those problems are out there and help and facilitate that in any way that we can. And so that was what, why the original shot-in-the-arm program was brought forward, kind of a grand experiment. But I'll tell you what, it's been lauded across the state of Nebraska. And it brought North Platte a lot of very positive, uh, image and publicity as a result of it. And this really kinda moves it up on that next notch. Um, uh, the, part of the goal also was to, to help those developers out there, the local developers, continue to nurture a workforce and help train that, that future, uh, building trades, uh, person out there. So I, it, it's a real complicated issue. I'm just telling you, it, it's, we're just trying to do, we're trying to recognize the need and do something about it.
I just have a comment back to kinda what Martin was talking about. You know, you were asking about those numbers in Carney and Columbus and Norfolk and why all these different places are really able to build these houses and that kind of volume and where not. I have a friend who just got done building a house in Lincoln. And when I asked why they built a house and decided not just to buy a house, was it because it was cheaper, because they had enough labor, they did it in the right part of the season. It was literally cheaper for them to build the house in Lincoln and the part of Lincoln they wanted to be in than it was for them to buy a, you know, to buy a house from somebody. And so Carney maybe had that same situation, that they just have enough laborers, you know, that it makes a big difference in their ability to grow. North Platte, you know, this isn't gonna spur people to all of a sudden want to become, you know, an HVAC tech or, you know, a plumber, whatever. That's gonna take an entire generation to fix that problem. But, you know, some of those towns just have more of those skilled laborers than others. And I think North Platte is very, very lacking in skilled laborers, as is probably anybody who's built a house or tried to hire a bunch of contractors in the last, I don't know, five years.
And, and that's why we're working on those issues as well. But like you said, from the ground floor up.
Gary, they, one of the reasons Carney does is they have, uh, because they have housing, they attract people, because they have people that are coming to, to live there, they're spending bucks, and it's just a cycle.
Yep.
And we are losing population here.
If you turn the clock back to nineteen eighty, of those six communities, North Platte had the largest population of those six. And so we, we wanna get back there. We wanna show our peers and the rest of Nebraska, we're ready to compete and we're gonna get there.
Go ahead. Are you finished?
Yep.
Uh, there's been all kinds of hard work on the part of folks like you, Megan, and others. To try to make things happen here. And we've been through several changes of the watch over the years. And yet, our population seems to be, remain static over the last thirty or forty years. Carney, during the last thirty years, Carney has, has, uh, grown by about, the number I've heard was about forty-five percent during the time we've stayed right where we're at. And I think there are a variety of reasons for that that are more complicated than I'm capable of grasping. But it's a more complicated, as you have mentioned, it's more complicated than we laymen realize, I'm sure. But, uh, and I mentioned this to you one day. And I'm not anti-growth, I think it'd be great if we could grow our population like Carney did. But we're not Carney. And so if we can't be Carney, if we can't experience that kind of growth, then is it so bad to be the best dang little town we can be? Without that growth? And I think, I think we are, we're a wonderful place to be and live. I raised my family here, I've been here for about forty years. And I wouldn't want to be anywhere else for my own reasons. But, uh, I think sometimes we, we're unrealistic in terms of our optimism that we can grow. Because I've, I've, I've heard people in your position say time after time, we're poised for growth. Well, we've been poised for growth for a long time. It just isn't happening. Uh, that's, it's too bad it's not, but it, it's just not. So I still think we're a great town.
I, I do too.
Yes, sir.
You know, I've sat through on both of these situations with the first housing that we came up with and it worked fine. And I've sat through the second one, and this isn't something that's been taken lightly. And you say, why can't we grow? And I think one of the reasons we can't grow, we're not willing to step out and probably take a little bit of a chance. I don't think this is a chance at all myself, because I've been in on all those meetings and I've seen how the people think and they think good. And it isn't something done on the spur of the moment. And we've gotta do some more progressive thinking and acting than just talking about it. I think this is a wonderful program, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Glenn. Yes, sir?
Mark Ottinger, Walmart Distribution Center. I was unfortunate enough to be here, uh, when the DC was built, but I, uh, I do feel that the incentives that were done for the distribution, bringing here and the five hundred and sixty jobs that are there, um, wa- was a great momentum builder for, uh, the town. And I know it was a lot of money and I think it was well worth it to this day. There is, to a point though, where the labor market has pretty much quit growing. And there's many things that attribute to that. Uh, Jim, I agree. Um, we're very fortunate with the other employers in town to, uh, recruit quite a few individuals over the last two months from outside of our, our community that are new hires for us. One of the challenges is though, I, I have some of those folks who come from out of town, living in a camper at a campground, um, struggling to find a rental, because there, there is a housing situation that is very challenging for them. Uh, Brooke, you asked about wages. Um, we average anywhere between forty-three and fifty-eight. Um, and that's just an average, they can do much better than that if they, they decide to. Um, so in my opinion, they're, they're, they're good jobs. Um, with good benefits and our goal would still be to bring more labor to the community. Capacity becomes an issue for employers. And when we can't supply the labor, um, for the distribution center, you know, we have to make challenging decisions of now, wh- where does our productivity come from, um, to service our stores? And in, uh, you know, South Dakota, North Dakota, uh, Colorado, Wyoming? And, uh, you know, we, you know, from a standpoint of not getting labor, so that there does come a decision that has to be made. You know, can we continue to do capacity of, of what our distribution center was built for? We could have the capacity to hire eight hundred associates if we needed to. Um, and, uh, we'd hope to be there someday. So, uh, the housing market is very important. Um, Glenn, I think you made a great point. You know, sometimes we gotta, we gotta go out there like we did when we offered the Walmart DC to come here and, and
Yes.
take a chance, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you all that spoke, we appreciate it and thank you asking, for asking, or, um, giving the questions answered. You were perfectly wonderful. Okay, now, uh, on to number five. I think we're at five. Number five is a second reading action to adopt ordinance number three nine seven five to rezone certain lands from an A-one transitional agricultural district to a B-two highway commercial district located at forty-five oh two South Buffalo Bill Avenue. The property is currently described as part of track B, correction of ma- of Major's replat in the east one half of section eighteen, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Yes, please?
In order to the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning part of track B, correction of Major's replat in the east half of section eighteen, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from A-one transitional agricultural district to B-two highway commercial district. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
A move that we adopted on second reading, ordinance number thirty-nine seventy-five to rezone certain lands from an A-one transitional agricultural district to a B-two highway commercial district located at forty-five oh two South Buffalo Bill Avenue. This property is currently described as part of track B, correction of Major's replat in the east half of section eighteen township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
That motion passes. Item number six, adopt resolution approving claim and authorizing issuance of warrants of a warrant to Steel's Roofing and Construction in the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and sixteen cents to pay approved claim and referring to and incorporating terms and conditions ordinance number three eight seven four relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May twenty-first of two thousand and thirteen.
Move that we adopt a resolution approving claim and authorizing the issuance of warrant to Steel's Roofing and Construction in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and sixteen cents to pay approved claim and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number thirty-eight seventy-four relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Second. That motion passes. And item, item number seven is claims.
Move that we pay the claims.
Second. One quick question. I think I've asked this before, on the electric department, Eaton Corp., who is that?
Eaton's Transformers Electric.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, for three hundred grand.
And that motion passes as well.
Second.